Hey Andrew, can you hear me?
I can. My name is Kiva.
Oh hi Kiva, I think I can hear you.
Yeah, I think Andrew probably stepped away.
Okay, cool, thanks.
I can. My name is Kiva.
Oh hi Kiva, I think I can hear you.
Yeah, I think Andrew probably stepped away.
Okay, cool, thanks.
Andrew, can you hear me? Andrew, can you hear me?
I can hear you Kiva. I just had me on mute because I think we're live streaming on Facebook right now.
So we are, but I'm hearing myself pretty delayed and I'm not sure what that's about.
Okay, I'm not either. You sound fine to me. Yes, I can.
See, I said that like two minutes ago.
I can hear you Kiva. I just had me on mute because I think we're live streaming on Facebook right now. That's interesting. I'm gonna go back on mute.
Hearing myself pretty delayed and I'm not sure what that's about.
Okay, I'm not either. You sound fine to me. Yes, I can.
See, I said that like two minutes ago.
I can hear you Kiva. I just had me on mute because I think we're live streaming on Facebook right now. That's interesting. I'm gonna go back on mute.
Hearing myself pretty delayed and I'm not sure what that's about.
Okay, I'm not either. You sound fine to me. Yes, I can.
See, I said that like two minutes ago.
I can hear you Kiva. I just had me on mute because I think we're live streaming on Facebook. Interesting. I'm gonna go back on mute. You sound fine to me.
I said that two minutes ago. Okay, maybe I figured it out. Was that, was the recording... Andrew, can you hear me?
Yes, I can hear you.
Were you hearing the same thing I was hearing?
I was. We were in some sort of a loop.
Yeah, so I just realized that I was also tuned in on the Facebook Live from my laptop where I'm on right now. So I just disconnected that.
Okay.
Why was it on a loop? That's concerning to me.
Well, it seems to be working okay now and I hadn't yet disconnected the Facebook Live, so I think we're probably in good shape.
Okay. Gosh, I hope so.
I think we are. Are you able to look at Facebook Live on your phone?
Yes.
Let's do that and see if that looks right. I'm gonna go back on mute.
I'm also looking at it on my work laptop. And it's not doing the loop thing. And I think the loop thing was because I was also on live on my laptop where I'm also on Zoom. Oh, I think it still is.
Hey, just checking. Mic check.
I can hear you.
Okay. It's not very loud. I can't, I can barely hear. Mic check again.
I can hear you loud and clear.
Okay, I copy now. Too dark in this room? Um, I can't. Somebody's talking, I can't hear them.
There's a thing that says that the host will go and mute your microphone now. Hello?
I can hear you Neil.
You can hear me now?
I can hear you perfectly.
Okay, well, there was quite a while when nobody could hear me. So that's good. Are you able to see me Dave?
I cannot see you sir. I cannot see you, sir. Now I can see it.
Okay. Good.
Good evening, guys. Good evening. And we all hear me well? I hope yes. Wondering if they're.
Yes.
Now again, mic check, can you hear me?
Yes.
Alright.
Okay, sorry about that, I'm just trying to get my screens together. Good evening, everyone, and welcome to the Virgin Islands Housing Finance Authority's Community Development Block Grant Mitigation Public Hearing. Pretty much a virtual town hall meeting to get input. All things mitigation and what, what we can do as a territory to mitigate future hazards and natural disasters. All of the information obtained and acquired here and through our surveys will be used as a tool to drive the action plan that we have to submit to HUD later on this year. So I am Kiva Muller, Communications Manager here at VIHFA. Also presenting with me today is Mr. Dave Martin. He is the Chief Disaster Recovery Officer. And Neil Rackliff, he is the Senior Vice President of Tetra Tech, which is our contractor that's assisting us with help writing the action plan. You guys want to say hello, give any opening remarks, guys?
Thank you.
Good evening.
So the goal for today's public hearing, one, you can, you can see it on the screen, is we're gathering feedback on the opinions and perceptions of residents, all of you guys. That should be high priority items in the mitigation action plan. We also want to identify potential project types that will help save the lives, save lives and reduce future losses to homes, businesses and critical facilities. And then I want to, we want to spread the word about the online survey. When you go on the vihfa.gov website, it's on the dialogue box that pops up and it takes maybe about two minutes out of your day to fill it out and select some high priority items. And there's also many different ways to provide feedback and we also, we, we, we really want to hear from you because anything in the action plan, we want it to come from residents. We, after the presentation, we will allow you guys to, all of the participat- participants on the meeting. Can you roll it back? Yes, thank you. To... So we're, we're, we want to hear from you. So after the presentation, we're gonna allow four minutes per person if you have comments. And then you can also feel free to use the chat feature on Zoom. Make sure to include your first, your last name, and if you have any other questions, you could put your email so we can get back to you. Take the survey, and if you have any other, like extended comments that you may want to ask or submit, question, comments or concerns, feel free to email mitigation@vihfa.gov. That is mitigation@vihfa.gov. And I will hand it over to Mr. Martin, are you up next?
Yes, ma'am. And thank you, Kiva. I want to start out by talking at high level about CG, CD, BG funding. And essentially, there are three callouts. The first one talks about the Federal Register, and if you're not familiar with it, it's a publication that the federal government provides. It's every weekday except on federal holidays, and it contains government agency rules, proposed rules, and in this case, public notices. The, the bottom half of the first callout gets us to the middle one that talks about the funding for the region, which is $774,188,000. And then the third callout is talking about our action plan. And it currently has a due date of October 6th, but because of COVID-19, there are possibilities for extensions through January of 2021. Um, I, I am certain that a lot of people have heard about the various tranches that the territory will receive funding allocations, which are essentially just releases from HUD. And for today's meeting, we are focused on tranche three, which is CDDB MIT. I don't like to read slides, but I think the definition is important enough, and I'll, I'll try to do it pretty quickly. So the definition of mitigation are those activities that increase resilience to disasters and reduce or eliminate the long-term risk of loss of life, injury, damage to and loss of property and suffering and hardship by lessening the impact of future disasters. So the HUD goals for the mitigation program are, you know, they need to be focused on quantifiable and verifiable and substantive events. So they need to support data-informed investments and build capacity to comprehensively analyze disaster risk. They also need to support adoptions of policies and reflect local and regional priorities with a focus on community risk reduction. And then they have three other distinctions. One, to maximize the impact of funds by, two, encouraging and leveraging private, public and partnerships. And three, by driving coordination with other federal sources. So you can go to the next slide. The, the, the next question you might ask is what is the spending timeline? And as you can see, it's, the, the program will, can, will last for as many as 12 years. Alright, I am going to continue with the MIT requirements. So the mitigation activity requirements are, one, that they meet the definition of mitigation activities. Two, that they address the current and future risk identified in a mitigation needs assessment, which we'll talk about later. And three, be CDDB eligible activities under Title I of the HCDA, which is, is the Housing and Communication, excuse me, Housing and Community Development Act, or eligible pursuant on, pursuant to a waiver or alternative requirement. And then four, and I'll talk about this later, meet a HUD national objective. So mitigation needs assessment. The, the needs assessment is what's required by HUD and, and it's built primarily on FEMA's.
I'm just asking you to move the slide forward.
Would you please move the slide forward?
We're not, we're not seeing that, I'm not seeing the slide now, I don't know if the rest of you are.
No, I am not.
Who should be back online shortly.
I feel like I should ab-live here, I won't, I'll just wait for the slide to come.
Should be back on shortly, I think there was just an internet issue.
Okay, great.
Okay.
While we're waiting, I'm still encouraging all participants to use the chat room to ask any questions so that we can compile a list and accident, and answer them at the end. And also, you can email all your feedback to mitigation@vihfa.gov.
Kiva, do you want me or somebody else to try to share, share the screen? Oh, it's back.
It's back. Okay, so picking, picking back up, the mitigation needs assessment is a, essentially, it's a risk-based assessment that will inform the use of CDDB MIT funds to meet mitigation needs. And the VIHFA process is to, one, consult with other jurisdictions, the private sector and other government agencies. We will use the most recent risk assessment through the FEMA hazardous mitigation plan. And then as a starting point, use the, the risk identified in the FEMA-approved hazard mitigation plan. Mitigation needs are, address seven critical service areas. Safety and security, food, water, shelter, health and medical, energy, power and fuel, communications, transportation and hazardous materials. So I had mentioned earlier about mitigation HUD national objectives. So as far as for funded projects, they need to demonstrate the ability to operate for, for the useful life of the project. And they need to include a plan. They need to include a plan for the long-term operation. They also need to be consistent with other mitigation activities. Two primary objectives, one is low to moderate income. And essentially, that drives a 50% benefit to low and moderate income persons. And then the second is urgent need for addressing future risk and providing results that are measurable for, and as I mentioned earlier, viable reduction of risk, loss of life and property. So from a, you can move, thank you, from a pro, from a perspective, covers four primary programs, infrastructure and public facilities, housing, economic development and planning and public services. And the covered projects are infrastructure projects having a total project cost over 50 million. And then for larger projects, they have additional rules and requirements that HUD demands. Next, I am going to pass the presentation to Mr. Neil Rackliff from Tetra Tech, and he will speak more about specific potential project types. Neil?
Thank you very much. If you could go to the slide entitled CDBG MIT Eligible Activities, please. Thank you. We do, we get a lot of questions regarding what kinds of projects are eligible for the program and there, it's, it's, the program is structured such that there, there's a very. the program is structured such that there there's a very wide spectrum or broad spectrum of different kinds of projects that can be utilized in the in the CDBG MIT program. So let's go, yeah, stay on that slide, please. Project development considerations. So when we're, there are certain elements that we have to look at when we're trying to determine whether a particular proposed project is eligible or not. One of the things that we look at is whether it benefits people of low and moderate income. The Housing and Community Development Act is designed to primarily benefit people of low and moderate income. And sometimes when HUD makes these large grants to states or territories, cities, counties, they sometimes forget that the overriding statutory purpose of community development block grant money is to help people who were who are low and moderate income. So then the the project would also have to to meet the definition of mitigation. So when you're looking at something, we have to say, well, what specific hazards will the project mitigate against and how will it do so? The federal government has just has established lifelines that are different resources and systems within a community that are critically important. So we look to see if the proposed projects affect those. And then for for all the costs, all the projects, there is a it's necessary to look at both the the benefit and the costs. And if we're talking about covered projects that Mr. Martin referred to earlier, which are those fifty million dollars or larger, there is a, there's a technical benefit cost analysis that has to be done that's required by FEMA in which is quite involved. And so we have to go through that process, but but we're always looking at is this a good cost effective investment? We know that that even though we're talking about seven hundred and seventy four million dollars, which seems like a huge amount of money, there are so many needs in the US Virgin Islands that we all want to make sure that we we really are using that money as wisely as possible to do the most good we can. And then then you have to look at the particular project and determine whether the community has the resources and the capacity to implement that project. And then will it be sustainable? And, you know, how will we provide operation and maintenance for the project going forward? Next slide. So this is a the visual that helps us to 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 be able to articulate or or display for you what some of the the factors are that going in that go into identifying mitigation projects. So we look at, you know, do they implicate hazards? And if so, where and how severe are those hazards and what kind of past occurrences have have occurred related to those that to a particular hazard? How likely are those to happen again? And we look at existing community assets and both the population building environment, buildings and infrastructure and the natural environment, the economy. You know, we're we're really trying to figure out where is the maximum risk? And how can we achieve the greatest benefit using these these funds? Next slide. So here are some examples of kinds of mitigation projects that could be eligible. You know, various public facilities, projects, infrastructure improvements and hardening, you know, road projects, bridges, you know, putting power lines underground so that the electricity system is more resilient. Housing is a very large part of this. You're allowed to you to buyouts of people who perhaps have homes that are in areas that repetitively flood. And if you, you know, if you're in a home that repetitively floods, it's very hard to sell it, of course. And so there you could set up a buyout program that would help folks in that situation out. We can do planning with with the funding. And we can also do various public services. And what we're referring to there are programs that can help individuals with mental health services, job programs, could be health clinics, a pretty vast array of services that could help the population deal with past disasters and become more resilient and capable of handling future disasters. And then we look very much at economic development projects in determining how we can help the local economy here. And given the recent coronavirus pandemic and the economic devastation that's been caused by that, this is an area that we we need to look particularly hard at. Next slide. Here are some examples of things that are actually specifically ineligible. So you can't you can't use this funding for buildings used for the general conduct of government. What does that mean? It means you can't use the CDBG MIT funds to build a new city hall. Right? You've the federal government views those kinds of capital investments as as those that are the responsibility of of local governments. And so they want to be putting money into things that will go above and beyond what what you have in the in the base case. So emergency response services can't be funded, private utilities cannot. And electric power grid projects are an interesting one. There has been money that has been allocated by by HUD for electric power improvements in both Puerto Rico and the United States Virgin Islands. However, the the specific rules for that program have not been published by HUD yet. And so we've been told to to just stay in a holding pattern and and wait to receive further guidance before we can go there. Next slide, please. So I'll just briefly walk through some of these community lifelines that I referred to earlier. You know, projects that can help with safety and security in the the various areas that are listed on the slide there could be good areas to focus on for using this funding. Next slide, you know, is communications, you know, we all know that that when disasters occur and power is out and cell phones aren't working, that it's communications is a huge problem. So we could be, we could use some of these funds to improve communications and harden them so that the next time that there is a a natural disaster, we'll be better prepared. Next slide. Food, water, sheltering, particularly, of course, on an island where we're reliant on food imports to the degree that we are. There, if there are things that we can do together with this funding to be able to ensure greater food security, we, that's that's eligible. And those could be very important things to do. The water system in some parts of the island, as I think we all know, there are there are areas that that don't have good clean drinking water. And that's something that we could work to change. Next slide. Transportation, we've already talked about some of of these items here, major roads and highways, bridges, public transit systems. There's, there's a lot there that can be done with this funding. And so you can see as we move through this that even though seven hundred and seventy four million dollars is a lot of money, you can get, you can allocate it pretty quickly when you look at at all these different possibilities. Next slide is discusses health and medical issues. And then then and after that, the other, the next lifeline, next slide is hazardous material. So there may be opportunities to make the US Virgin Islands safer with regards to hazardous materials. The next slide highlights the energy lifeline. And we know that that is a huge issue in in the Virgin Islands, that the cost of power is is very high. And so if there's a way to use some of these funds to reduce that cost of power to help folks out, that is something that that could be eligible and that that we could work together on. Next slide. We wanted to give a quick overview of the the timeline. See, the the federal government published a federal registered notice on September tenth of two thousand and nineteen. And what that essentially means is that the federal government puts out the specific rules for using the seven hundred and seventy four million dollars. And then they encourage communication between the Virgin Islands Housing Finance Authority, other governmental entities, community groups, nonprofit groups, for profit folks, really everybody that we can get to join in the conversation, we want to be able to talk to and and learn from and understand what are the things that are most important to the citizens here to address. These next two boxes, mitigation needs assessment, development and public input hearings hearings. This is the part of the process that we're in right now, where we've had one public input hearing before this one. This is our our second, and we will have a third. And we are are grateful for those who are participating. We are in the process of doing this mitigation needs assessment, which means essentially HUD says, we're giving you the seven hundred and seventy four million dollars, but we want you to use it wisely. We want you to look at hazard mitigation plans that you may have already enacted or put into place so that these dollars aren't spent in a vacuum, you know, so that the right hand knows what the left hand is doing and that there's there's cooperation between the various public agencies in the Virgin Islands regarding how to use these funds most wisely. After we conclude the mitigation needs assessment and the hearings, then we will, we will draft the action plan. And it will be translated into languages that are relevant to to folks in the Virgin Islands. And then the action plan will be available for comment for at least forty five days. And then we have time to respond to those comments and then we will submit the action plan to HUD October sixth, twenty twenty. That deadline was extended from April sixth earlier. And as Mr. Martin mentioned a little while ago, HUD has even offered additional extension time beyond that because of the coronavirus pandemic. Next slide. I think that actually concludes my part. We at Tetra Tech are are very grateful for the opportunity to serve Virgin Islanders in this capacity. We we recognize this is a really important stewardship. And we want to do everything that we can to to help you do things that are really transformative and the, you know, the the most beneficial projects possible for the people of the Virgin Islands. So thank you. I think I turned it back to Kiva now. Is that correct?
Yep, that's me.
All right. Thank you, Kiva.
I was trying to find the lights in here. On that too dark. Okay, guys, so this is the second virtual town hall meeting. We did one in June. We got some good feedback there. And we just wanted to take it to another time to get more more feedback for from the community. So we will have another one maybe towards the end of this month or in August. And we will find other ways to engage our stakeholders. At this time, we are also live on Facebook. We're using Zoom. Like I said, feel free to use the chat room to ask any questions. And then following the public hearings, before we submit the action plan to HUD, it will engage in a forty five day comment period after the document is done. So, you know, everyone that participated in these meetings, you can see where your feedback went and review the document and provide other comments there as well. So that's where we're heading next. So we have one more public hearing. I don't have a date for it yet, but that information will come out soon. And then the forty five day comment period before we submit the full action plan to HUD. Next slide. Yeah, so we went over this slide in the beginning. So here we are. If you have any questions, comments or concerns, feel free to use a chat room. If you want to, I wonder this one doesn't have the raise hand feature, doesn't it? I don't think so.
No, I don't. I don't see it.
No. We had one, we did the test site earlier. So
A few people have, if you open the chat, it does look like a few people have raised their hands. So see if that helps you, Kiva, to see that.
Let's see. Barney Johnson asks for a copy of the PowerPoint. We will definitely be publishing the PowerPoint online. Oh, we had a little technical difficulties getting it up before this meeting, but we'll definitely, it it'll definitely be available online. Andrew, I'm not sure if you can see. I want us to unmute everyone to see, you know, anyone have any comments or questions that they can ask. I don't want it to be confusion, but I don't see another way where we can engage folks who have something to say. Before we do that, I'm just going to reiterate, if you have any other comments or feedback, you can also email mitigation at vihfa.gov. And please, 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 if you haven't already, take the mitigation survey. It's on our website, vihfa.gov. When it first pops up, there's a dialogue box that populates the screen. And the survey is right there. It takes you to a Microsoft Forms page. And you can fill it out. It talks about the lifelines of the community and where you are. What are your high priority needs and stuff like that? So it's a pretty simple and quick survey. So I encourage you to do that. The link is in the chat room as well. The hand raise is on the participant icon. So if you have, you would like to say something, you can use that icon. And Andrew, I think he's the host for the meeting, he can unmute you and feel free to ask. What's on the next slide, Andrew?
It looks like Mr. Peter Chapman has a hand raised and his microphone appears to be unmuted now. And I think that would be our first question.
All right, Peter.
Hey, good evening, Neil, and thanks to you and the Tetra Tech team for what is thus far a very informative presentation. So I have a, I have a question that relates to the first couple of tranches of CDBG DR in relation to HUD mitigation funds, CDBG MIT. So understanding CDBG MIT as we do, it seems as if many of the things that are reflected in the action plan for the first two tranches are really a better fit with with CDBG MIT. So what thought is Tetra Tech and the Housing Finance Authority giving to shifting some amount of of that of that money to? some amount of of that of that money to to the MIT action plan as it as it were? That's my first, that's my first question.
Do you want me to take that, Mr. Martin?
That's fine. Go ahead.
Sure. We there is an effort underway to see which categories of funding under the CDBG DR action plan and its amendments would be better suited to be moved over into CDBG MIT. And actually, that's something that HUD has strongly encouraged, not only the US Virgin Islands to do, but other jurisdictions who've received large amounts of CDBG disaster recovery funding and then later received an allocation of CDBG MIT funding. So we are actually going through an exercise right now to look at how we should amend the previous action plan for disaster recovery and and to determine how much we should try to move over. I will tell you that it's been very interesting since we've got here, you know, different groups, governmental, non-governmental, et cetera, all over the US Virgin Islands have recognized that there's a lot of money here. And so lots and lots of of requests have come to the Virgin Islands Housing Finance Authority and and so we're we're working through that process. You know, part of the point of of this exercise is to hear from you, you know, in the public, Mr. Chapman, and and get ideas that that you may have for how much of that makes sense to you to to move across. So I can tell you HUD wants us to move some of that money. We're looking at how to do that. But part of of that analysis is having these very conversations and trying to get a a better sense of of what the community thinks are the most important goals that that could be funded and which is the right program from which to fund them. Does that help?
Yeah, it does. That's that's very, that's very helpful. That's very helpful. And and to frame this as a, to frame it as a positive. And I know that you all probably know this from having sort of studied, you know, sort of the root of our vulnerability in the in the territory. So vulnerability to both natural disaster-related shocks as well as economic shocks. And so while all roads don't lead back to economic development, I do think that at least one of the big thoroughfares, you know, leads to economic development and economic diversification. And one of the reasons that we that we lost 12% of our job base immediately after the 27, 2017 hurricanes is because we have an economy that is largely tied to tourism and other things that are particularly vulnerable to those those type of shocks. So economic diversification, I think as we are looking at reprogramming, as it were, some of the DR money and as we are looking at creating an investment strategy for for the MIT funds, I think we have to look at economic development in a very thoughtful way. And just to give you some some very specific, not to get too granular, but to give you some specific ideas, at least from the from the economic development practitioners perspective in the territory. I think that we have to look at entrepreneurship and small business development. So we we cannot replicate the 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 problem that we see in the first two tranches where nothing is budgeted for small business development and entrepreneurship. We also have to look at neighborhood revitalization and place-based redevelopment. And I think we also have to look at at business attraction. And then just drilling down a little bit deeper, there are some sectors that I believe represent very important potential growth sectors for the Virgin Islands. So tech and knowledge-based, which is no surprise, coming from coming from me, advanced manufacturing, and there's a robust discussion taking place within the public sector and private sector about advanced manufacturing. The other category is blue and green economy initiatives. So that gets to a number of things, including but not limited to to food, food security. And then the fourth and last sector, a focused leg of the stool, which is related to some of the others, is sustainable agriculture. And so I want just to just put those things on on the record. And we are going to be also encouraging Tetra Tech and the Housing Finance Authority to look at ensuring that 25% roughly of the overall portfolio of both DR and MIT funds are dedicated to job-creating economic development.
Thank you. That's the kind of input we really really need and and appreciate.
Sure thing.
Anybody else out there have any comments? Questions?
Let me see if anyone's saying anything on Facebook. Well, I think we can use some of this time to talk about some of the feedback that came up on the last meeting. I know some people asked about if this is only for hurricanes and what other disasters or hazards are covered under MIT. I know there was a good comment about droughts since we're kind of experiencing one. But it rained a few days ago and yesterday, so I'm not sure if we're still in a drought. Help me out here. But all of the other things that are that could be considered, I think mitigation has a broader reach than disaster recovery. So this is what these meetings are for so that we can invoke thought, think about, just think outside the box and get creative with what we can do with this money. Still monitoring the chat room. If you have any questions, comments, concerns, feel free to ask now.
And do we have the the listeners unmuted so that they can just speak up if they've got a question or do we have everybody muted?
Andrew, can you help me out? I think we can go ahead and unmute all. I know there are a few people on phone lines.
And I see that Mr. Chapman has his hand raised. I'm not sure. You have that raised again?
I do.
Okay.
So I I I don't, I don't, I don't mean to be over overbear. So 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 Neil, we we're going to be, so the we in this case is the the governor has established a task force on economic realignment. So this is separate and apart from the other planning activities that are taking place throughout the territory like the the SEDS process. And so one area of focus for us is looking at how we align disaster recovery funding with the economic and economic development needs of the territory. So we we will be submitting to you very soon a list of project concepts that that we think align well with both MIT and and DR to the extent that a a material amount of the DR funding can get freed up for job-creating economic development. So I just, I just wanted to make that clear.
No, that's helpful. It's it's great to be able to get those those thoughts and ideas on the record. That's one of the reasons that we do we really encourage folks to speak up if they have any questions or comments, you know, this what you're you're contributing will become part of the public record of this whole public participation process regarding figuring out the best way to spend the $700 million. So yeah, we we're happy to listen to anybody else who's got any ideas, thoughts. Please don't, don't hesitate to throw them out there.
Great. Thank you.
Thank you, Peter.
Questions, comments, feel free to speak up now. Everyone is unmuted. If anything in the slides were unclear. Check your.
Hello?
I think participants are unmuted at this point unless you've muted yourself through your phone or your computer. So if you have, if you're on the phone and can't use the raise hand or or wanted to add something, you should have that ability as long as you're unmuted on your own device.
If anything in the slides that was unclear, just let us know. Now is the time.
Okay. And I see Kiva, a hand is up. There's not a name associated.
Good evening, everyone. I joined you late. I'm happy to be viewing and hearing this presentation. If you can clarify for me, MIT.
Yes, that that, you know, we we forget sometimes that we use a lot of of acronyms that that normal people don't necessarily use. And so the MIT just stands for mitigation. So the this Community Development Block grant funding that has been allocated to the US Virgin Islands, 770 million of that is supposed to be used to make people and property in the Virgin Islands safer from disasters. And that could be, you know, mitigating against hurricanes, droughts, earthquakes, tsunamis, any kind of disaster. So does that help?
Yes, it does. Thank you.
I'm Ms. Rowan.
Hi, Kiva.
Hi, thank you for joining.
Why, thank you for having me. The mitig, I have another question. I'm very interested in recycling. And I've done a bit of research and I found where plastics are now being used in road reconstruction and road repair. Since we've gone into the COVID session, I have so many bottles on my porch and much single-use plastic. And I would really like to see us take off with taking a handle on the whole recycling process, the glass, the paper, the plastic. And I see this as a thing that needs to be mitigated because once bad weather comes, it all ends up in the ocean. It all ends up in the street. We need to be able to handle our waste. So would that fit in under mitigation?
It could. It could. And and so part of the the questions that we we collectively, I would, I would submit need to ask ourselves is when we look at the number of good projects for the US Virgin Islands that could be eligible by HUD standards, there's probably going to be more projects that that are possible to be done than we have money to do. So then the the next question becomes is that the the highest priority, right? And 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 it may be. That's part of why we're doing this hearing is to listen to folks and get as much information as we can about what what I'll care about the most. We appreciate those thoughts. That's very helpful.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Kiva, we have one new question in the chat now. Would you like me to read it?
Oh. Alfonso asked, can you expand a little more on the selection criteria for comparing proposed project, projects or ideas for funding? Can you expand a little more on the selection criteria for comparing proposed projects or ideas for funding?
And and I'm happy to take that one too, unless somebody else wants to. The 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 way this process works is it's kind of a lengthy process as you, as you can see. HUD, well, first, Congress appropriates the the money for the purpose of helping out jurisdictions that have had problems with with natural disasters. And then the Department of Housing and Urban Development writes the rules in a federal registered notice. And then they make allocations and then we see how much money is going to the US Virgin Islands. So what we're doing right now in a general sense is HUD requires us to tell them what our our plan is for using that money. And we call that the action plan. So that's what we're we're working to do together right now is get that action plan submitted to HUD. And then HUD has to agree with us that the the uses that we choose are the best or well, not necessarily the best, but that they're eligible. And then there will be a process after HUD has approved the action plan where for-profit, nonprofit and other organizations can submit applications to the the Virgin Islands Housing Finance Authority to for specific projects to try to obtain funding there. So so that's, we're not at that stage yet. But we still really appreciate any ideas that you all have because that goes into coming up with the action plan and and determining, you know, what major categories the funding should go into. So does that help answer your question or or did I or did I miss the mark there?
Anne Berger also asks, can these loss of power? So pretty much the loss of power is a major problem after every storm and funds we use to relocate power lines below ground.
Yes, they can be used to relocate power lines underground. And that's one issue that HUD has recently specifically said they would support.
But that would become covered under the special tranche for utilities, correct?
Most likely, yes. Now, a certain, not only HUD money is coming to the US Virgin Islands, but there's also money that's coming to the Virgin Islands from FEMA. So they may have some projects that can implement improvements to the to some parts of the electrical power system. But but as a general rule, that is, that's often a use that that people use for Community Development Block Grant Disaster Recovery Funding and can be used with CDBG mitigation funding. for community development block grant disaster recovery funding and can be used as new CDBG mitigation funding.
Alma Whitfield on Facebook asks, will the results of the survey be made public?
Absolutely. That we're trying to be as transparent as humanly possible. This is the public's money. It's your money. And that's why we're, we're, we're seeking your input and we will make public the results of the survey.
Another five minutes for questions, comments. So feel free to ask. We're also monitoring the Facebook live stream. So if you have any questions or comments, you can type it in the comment section there as well.
Are you able to tell how many people are, are participating via Facebook Live, Kiva?
Yes. We have 18 now, but at one point we had up to 25.
Great. And we have about 21 people, I believe, participating through the Zoom call.
Questions, comments, or taking questions or comments right now, guys? Anyone with their hand up? No?
Looks like we have a hand up, Kiva.
Hand up, but I think we're all, they're all unmuted. So I think that person needs to unmute their line.
It, it could have been me accidentally with the hand, so I apologize.
I actually, I actually have my hand up. So I'm, I'm recalling that after the last two CAT5s, we were put in a bit of predicament and we still are where we have, we don't have enough schools and the schools are not in the right place. Can we use some of these monies to help us relocate those schools?
Potentially. What, another, a very related use that's been discussed for some of this, this funding would be to do, build community centers that could be utilized for safe places for people to be if there's a hurricane. And, and also that could allow us to have places for people to congregate that are not the schools so that we end up having to close schools down because there are people staying in them after the hurricane. So, so yeah, there, that's something that could be done and, and, and be a good idea.
If you're at your computer, we're, in addition to monitoring questions in the chat, we're also monitoring questions in the Q and A feature of Zoom.
We're taking questions. Sorry, I had to go find light. Usually use a sunlight, but it's getting dark.
You're coming through very well on the screen on my end.
One second, here's getting really, really dark.
And Kiva, we have another question in the chat from Ms. Berger. It says, you got it?
When will the final decisions about allocation of funds be published? When will the final decisions about allocation of funds be published?
That would essentially be, are you able to hear me, Kiva? That would essentially be when the CDBG MIT action plan is submitted to, to HUD in the, in what we would hope would be the final form. And then HUD has to weigh in on it and hopefully they would everything in the plan and there wouldn't need to be changes, but it's, it's hard to know. But we will be putting a, a draft of the plan out quite a bit in advance of when it is submitted to HUD. So the general public will get to see the, the draft of the plan and the, the proposed allocations of funding well before it's submitted to HUD.
Another question for any construction projects. Wait, hold on. So back to Anne, she asks, what is the timeframe? And that would be for the action plan submission. Then Alfonso's question is for the construction projects that are impacted by COVID-19, I guess the ones that are ongoing and the need for infrastructure that can support social distancing measures and other safety measures be taken into consideration? I have to rephrase that question. I'm, I'm guessing that means for, I guess, future construction projects in this age of COVID-19, will social distancing or other safety measures will be taken into consideration? I guess in the design and construction phase? Alfonso, let me know if that's where I'm, where you're going.
The first answer is.
Anne, can you put your phone on mute please and thank you?
I think the first question to ask about when the action plan was due. And that date is October 6th of this year. But HUD also provided some additional extensions available to the region owing to COVID-19. And the extensions reached through January of, actually it's January 6th, specific date of 2021.
And I would say on, on the question regarding will new construction take into consideration and social distancing? I think that, that's something that architects and designers of buildings moving forward are, are going to take into consideration. I've already seen in industry publications and so forth about development and construction that, you know, people are looking at, does it make sense to have all of the HVAC system for, you know, a whole big office building to be connected? Or should there be, you know, sections that are, are independent of the whole so that there's less germs circulating through the building, et cetera? So I, I would say, it's just my opinion that yes, there, there will be more of those considerations just as we go forward in construction all over the place, right? The, also the federal government through the CARES Act, which is the big $2 trillion stimulus bill that Congress passed and the president signed, includes $5 billion of community development block grant COVID-19 funding. So normally Congress puts about $4.5 billion a year of this community development block grant funding out. But they added a whole, another whole $5 billion for communities to use to prepare for, respond to, and prevent the coronavirus. So that's, that's a new, brand new funding source that could be brought to play to, to help with some of those issues.
Great. And you all may have noticed that the slides briefly went back to the timeline for the submittal of this CDBG MIT action plan, just so you can have a second look at that.
Yeah. And I believe Mr. Martin answered the question regarding the timeframe.
I'm going to plug the email again, mitigation@vihfa.gov. If you have any other questions, comments, or concerns that you don't want to address publicly, make sure you take the MIT survey, vihfa.gov. Once that screen pops up, a dialogue box will pop up on the screen and the survey is the first one listed there. And am I missing something? Email your comments to mitigation@vihfa.gov and take the survey. Oh, and we'll be back with another public hearing maybe in the next couple of weeks. We don't have a date nailed down yet, but when we do, we'll definitely publicize it and invite you guys to attend once again. We're going to leave the line open up until 7:30. That's about 16 minutes from now since the meeting was advertised from 6:00 to 7:30. And we're just welcoming questions, comments, or concerns from you guys.
Unfortunately, we're all okay with awkward silence, right?
I did some research on mitigation a while back and I don't think we, we mentioned some background on it. So this is the first of its kind coming from HUD. They've done disaster recovery, CDBG funding before. But mitigation is new. And you know, personally think that, you know, they're tired of disaster recovery stuff. So it's like, give them some MIT money and make sure that this lasts. So Congress allocated nearly $7 billion and it covered qualifying 2015, 2016, and 2017 disasters. And we got a chunk of that money. So the funding lasts for, correct me if I'm wrong, guys, 12 years as opposed to DR is six. Am I right? And it covers a lot more DR. And like they mentioned earlier in the presentation, with DR, there have to have been a tie to the 2017 storms. With mitigation, it does not. We have more opportunity to spend the money mitigating and reducing loss of life, infrastructure, and just hazard, hazard risks here in the territory. So that's why we're having these hearings, so that we can get your input on things that we can possibly save before it gets bad. And it does not only have to be hurricanes. We have experienced waves of tremors, earthquakes. We're near a fault line. So my fingers are crossed that we don't ever get one, but it won't be surprising if we do get a tsunami. So we can mitigate stuff from that. There's floods. We got a lot of rain, droughts. Just anything that you can think of, we can discuss and talk about how it can be addressed under mitigation. That's kind of where we're going with this. We have one more meeting, like I said. It hasn't been nailed down yet, but we're going to keep talking about what we can possibly cover under MIT so that our friends at Tetra Tech can help us out with the action plan to submit to HUD. Once that's done, that's done. So we, we want to get your input on the front end to know we, we address all of our needs so that when we take it to HUD, we have those allocation of funding. I hope what I said was correct.
Everything, everything you said was correct. As far as I understand, it was very, very helpful. I think, I, Kiva made a really good point that this is the first time that Congress and HUD have ever made this kind of funding available. It's almost always been community development block grant funding, disaster recovery that, as Kiva mentioned, has to have a causal link or a tie to the specific disaster. But part of what Congress was trying to achieve here was to give money to communities to help them prepare for the next or upcoming disasters so that less damage to property would occur and less loss of life and injury to people would happen. So it's nice to have some preventive money put out into the system, which is, which is what this is.
Thank you guys for participating. Really, really appreciate you taking time out of your evening for getting on this Zoom call with us. It may not be the most glamorous, but it's stuff that we have to get done and things that we have to think about for our livelihood here in the VA. We still have some participants on Facebook and online. If you haven't taken the survey yet, now would be a great time to do so. Just type in www.vihfa.gov. First thing that pops up is a dialogue box that has the link to the survey right there. And if you find that you have some questions or concerns based on the survey that you took, because I don't think there's an open-ended comment section there, feel free to email us at mitigation@vihfa.gov.
So I'm just gonna jump in for part of the seven minutes left. I like the preventative measure idea. Housing Finance Authority being just that and more. I can see folks getting their small loans to do their minor repairs that would prevent their major disasters. Many people ended up in the major disaster because they couldn't do their minor care for their home. So I really would like to see a loan process where people of that situation can come forward and say, well, you know, they can get a small, a low-interest loan out of this process to prevent losing their roof or losing their windows, that type of stuff. I think this was an awesome presentation.
Thanks. That's a great idea.
Why, thank you. And I heard that suggestions paid. I'm gonna cut out now. I think this was awesome. And I joined late, forgive me, and I'm gonna stay interested. Thank you.
Thank you very much. Have a good night.
You too. Bye-bye. Kai? You're not lighting the stove, are you?
Ms. Ruin, I guess I hear you.
Oh, I apologize. I apologize. Washing your hands. Okay, have a good night.
Bye.
You're not lighting the stove. What is that?
Hey, Kiva. It's Robin. Thank you so much for inviting us. I thought it was a great presentation, too. Super informative. Lots to think about here. I'll take this back and we'll certainly, you know, give it some thought on our end and be sure to submit our comments and observations. But thank you so much. I look forward to the next one.
Thank you for joining, Robin.
All right. Talk soon.
All right. Have a good night.
Kiva, I see that one last question, I believe, has popped up in the chat. I don't know if you want to type in the question or if we should unmute. Oh, there it goes.
Oh, hi, Summer. Thanks for joining. A question, can these funds be used to retrofit a building for a food bank?
Yes, they could be. Now, saying that, one of the challenges that that we all have in working with this federal money is that there are a lot of strings attached. And eligibility gets into very specific issues. So I would say in general, yes, that could be an eligible use. But if you had a specific project, we'd have to really look hard at at the details and understand it and and make sure that it it passes muster and that, you know, we can get it to jump through all the hoops that are necessary to be approved by HUD.
Does that help, Summer? Okay, good. Thank you. All right. So we're gonna begin wrapping up now. I know I keep saying this, but feel free to submit any other questions, comments, or concerns to mitigation@vihfa.gov. You have a great night too, Summer. Thank you. And take the survey. Just take the survey. We want to hear from you. We have another, one more. This is the second. We have one more public hearing slash virtual town hall meeting. There are one and the same to bring forth to you guys to get more feedback. And we will also try to do other outreach activities. There isn't much that we can do though COVID madness, as I like to call it. But we will try other ways in reaching the majority and reaching residents and stakeholders here. One way is definitely take the survey and provide us with some commentary. Also, we definitely want to hear from you. After these hearings are done, the team will draft the action plan. And it will have a 45-day comment period for you guys to review all of the considerations made from these hearings and the surveys before we submit to HUD. Once it's submitted to HUD, they'll review it, send it back with approvals or changes. But once a document is final, then we can begin to start establishing the programming associated with the funds and making stuff happen. So this is the first, first, first step in CDBG MIT where the things are not going to come right away. It's a long process. And these funds are available. I don't think that they're available, but we have up until 12 years to spend the money. So we're only in the first stages. So be patient with us and just continue to provide your input. And I think that's all for me. Thank you, guys, for joining us. This is brought to you by the Virgin Islands Housing Finance Authority. I am Kiva, Communications Manager here. You also heard from Dave Martin, our Chief Disaster Recovery Officer, and Neil Ratcliffe of Tetra Tech. He's a Senior Vice President there. And Tetra Tech is the company assisting us with the action plan writing and submission. Do you guys have anything else you want to add before we close out?
Thanks. Thanks for doing a good job moderating, Kiva. You should get a talk show or something going.
Maybe.
You do very well. Thanks.
Yeah, thanks, Kiva. Very, very nice job. And Neil, to you. Thank you so much.
Thank you, sir. Appreciate it.
All right. I appreciate you guys rolling through this tonight. Well done.
And thank you for hosting, Andrew. We didn't see or hear from you, but we know that you're in the background making things happen. And Brenna. Appreciate you.
Good job to both, both of you. I think it went very well.
Thank you all. Have a great night. Went really well.
Thanks. Nine off. Thanks, y'all. Take care.